I call this meeting of the Onslow County Board of Commissioners to order. First object tonight will be the prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance by Mr. Cotton. So Ms. Moxley, would you lead us in prayer?
Let us pray. Almighty and eternal God, thank you for giving us another day and for all that has been provided to us on this good earth. Bless our community and all who are gathered here this evening. Grant our commissioners insight into the needs of our county and be with them in their deliberations as they make difficult decisions that impact the lives of our citizens. We pray that you will bless and protect the men and women in our armed forces who serve our country with tremendous courage, commitment, and sacrifice. Almighty God, we ask that you bless our employees whom we recognized during County Government Week for their effective, skillful, and dedicated service to the citizens of Onslow County. Please watch over them in all their endeavors. As we celebrate National Social Work Month, we pray for your blessing upon each and every social worker as they provide unconditional love, care, and support to those in need. Now with deep respect for the faith traditions and beliefs of all gathered here, hear us in a moment of silence. Mr. David Cotton will now lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everyone who's in attendance tonight. We appreciate you coming out to be with us at our meeting. If you have not silenced your phones, please do so at this time. The Board affords the public two opportunities to speak during each meeting. This is called public comment. The first public comment is for three minutes and must pertain to those items on the agenda. The second opportunity is for five minutes and you can speak on any topic that the Board has authority over. We ask that you sign up in the back of the room on the sheets and as your name is called, approach the podium and give your name and address. We also ask that you make your comments directly to the Board in its entirety with no interaction with the audience and that you keep your comments civil and respectful. We do not permit any comments that promote a candidacy or a business. The county commissioners will respond to any comments if they choose at Commissioner Comments. At this time, I need a motion to approve the agenda. So moved.
All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move.
A second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. This brings us to our first public comment for three minutes. Mr. Manager, do we have anyone signed up?
Madam Chair, we have no one signed up for the first public comment period.
Very well. We have quite a few proclamations. Would you like to lead the Board through the next few items?
Yes ma'am. Item four is presentations. The first item is proclamation for National Social Work Month 2016. At this time, I'll read the proclamation into the minutes. Whereas the primary mission of the social work profession is to enhance well-being and help meet the basic needs of all people, especially the most vulnerable in society; and whereas social work is one of the fastest-growing careers in the United States with more than 640,000 members of the profession; and whereas social workers work in all areas of our society to improve happiness, health, and prosperity, including government, schools, universities, the military, and mental health and healthcare facilities; and whereas social workers embody this year's Social Work Month theme, forging solutions out of challenges by helping individuals, communities, and society solve issues that confront them; and whereas thousands of child, family, and school social workers across the country provide assistance to protect children and improve the social and psychological functioning of children and their families; and whereas social workers work with older adults and their families to improve their quality of life and the ability to live independently as long as possible and get access to quality mental health and healthcare. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, in recognition of the numerous contributions made by Onslow County's Consolidated Human Services social workers, the Onslow County Board of Commissioners acknowledges the month of March 2016 as National Social Work Month and calls upon all citizens to join in celebration and support of the social work profession. Present this the seventh day of March 2016. Representatives of Onslow County Consolidated Human Services will accept the proclamation. The chairman requests that Commissioner Bright present the proclamation. Commissioner Bright?
It's a tremendous job and a tremendous responsibility to provide the services to our county. I think some of you were in there getting pins today. Recognize a few of you. And congratulations on that and your service. Longer we keep people, the less we have to train people and spend a lot of money. Some of the issues that these folks work with is mental health. And as you know, mental health in North Carolina and Onslow County is not exactly fixed. It's a broken system. And I met with a group of folks about two weeks ago, Sherry Slater and I, and it was DSS was there. Partnership for Children called the meeting. And we had a lot of players, the Sheriff's Department, the Police Department, Onslow Memorial Hospital, the School Board, Trillium, the board that I serve on as representative for the county, and RHA. And we were trying to come up with a solution to try to help fix the mental health issues in Onslow County. There are some other models in other counties that we're looking at. And when we come up with some consensus, we'll bring it to my board and then our board can look at it. But thank you so much for what you do. Who's going to receive this proclamation? Well, thank you so much, and I'm sure you've got a couple of words you'd like to say.
I do. Thank you so very much. I am Kimberly Winston, one of the social work program managers with Onslow County Department of Social Services. We have some very dedicated and hard-working social workers within our agency. Not only the social workers, but our support staff as well as our paraprofessionals. And just to share a little bit about you, before I came here, on last month, during the month of February, our agency received 285 reports of child abuse as well as adult protective services. In addition to that, we have 204 children within our foster care system. So it's not an easy job, and we couldn't do our job as program managers with our support staff. And we always say that social work is just not a profession, but it really is a calling for all of us. So we're very appreciative of this proclamation. Thank you very much.
Any of you want to say anything? How many of you? Sure, you were telling me how many teen pregnancies we had and right quick. I mean, you...
Six.
That meant sixteen?
Six.
Six per week is the teen pregnancy rate. And that is quite a stress on our system because we're obligated to help take care of those folks. So thank you for what you do. You've got your work cut out for you. We appreciate you coming up here tonight and receiving this proclamation, and thank you again for what you do. We're the Board. Is that your pleasure if you need to get up with us about anything? Thank you.
Thank you.
The second proclamation this evening involves the Onslow County Museum. It is the 40th anniversary of our Onslow County Museum. At this time, I'll read the proclamation into the record. Whereas the Onslow County Museum was founded on March 12, 1976, with the establishment of the Richlands Onslow County Museum Foundation, Inc., to provide a repository to keep in public trust the county's tangible history through the collection of artifacts, records, documents, and photographs. And whereas in 1980, the museum became part of Onslow County Government. And whereas during its 40-year history, the collections, educational programming, interesting exhibits, annual events, and outreach into the community have all contributed to the public's awareness, understanding, and appreciation of Onslow County's history. And whereas the Onslow County Museum, supporters, museum advisory board members, and staff endeavor each day to provide for the education of present and future generations, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners proclaims March 12, 2016 as County Museum Day in commemoration of the Onslow County Museum's 40th anniversary. Present this seventh day of March 2016. Ms. Lisa Whitman-Grice, our museum director, will accept the proclamation. The chairman requests that Commissioner Jarman present the proclamation. Ms. Grice, Mr. Jarman.
Ms. Grice.
Yes, sir.
It is a pleasure to stand here with you today and talk about our museum. I remember when it was over the bank. I'm only just a young child, you know? And, but I remember when it moved from up over the bank down to Hood's Drug Store.
Yes, sir.
That's what it was before they went in there. But I remember Ms. Raggedale putting all of her time in this thing. And then I also remember when they came in front of the board and wanted to build a museum.
Yes, sir.
And then everybody said you couldn't get a piece of land in Richlands to build a museum. I said, "No, you don't know what you're talking about." So I went to see Mr. Sylvester. Mr. Sylvester says I will do it for the museum. So that's where we got the land for the museum. But then it was a proud day when we voted to build a building.
Yes, sir.
And so I've seen it grow from ground up, and I'm very proud of our museum. Y'all have done a wonderful job. Our director before you, Mr. Potts, did a great job. And also, I'm pleased with our little part of a museum we got down in Sneets Ferry.
Yes.
With our local animal stuffing you've got in there, our domestic animals.
Yes, sir.
I think you people are doing a great job, and I really appreciate it.
Well, we appreciate it.
But it's nice to know and be here from the ground roots up. Everybody can say that.
Thank you, sir, so very much. On behalf of our boards, our staff, our volunteers, we want to thank all of the commissioners. Thank you, sir, for those wonderful words in recognizing our 40 years. This Saturday, March 12, we will have a holiday, not a holiday, but a celebration, open house from 5:30 to 7:30. We will have behind-the-scenes tours. So all of those wonderful artifacts and images that we talk about that we have will be available for the public to see. And we just invite everyone to help us celebrate the history of the museum and the heritage of our community, and we thank you again from the bottom of our hearts. Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all for what you do. You don't have any more here?
The third proclamation this evening is for County Government Week, March 7 through March 11, 2016. This time, I'll read the proclamation into the record. Whereas counties are one of America's oldest forms of government, dating back as early as 1634, and currently, the United States is home to approximately 3,069 counties that provide essential services to more than 300 million citizens; and whereas through organizational -- though, rather, organizational structures vary, all county governments are on the front lines of delivering vital services to residents; and whereas Onslow County proudly employs 1,250 employees in 25 departments who provide outstanding service to nearly 200,000 citizens; and whereas community leaders, county leaders, and all citizens should take steps to recognize all that is good within the county and praise those programs and individuals who have made progress and innovation available to all within Onslow County. And whereas each year, Onslow County celebrates County Government Week in an effort to both highlight services provided to citizens and thank the public servants that work every day for the benefit of our residents. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners declares March 7 through March 11, 2016 as County Government Week and is committed to lifting up the outstanding work that is done every day and to fostering an environment where all our employees feel valued, engaged, and included. Present this seventh day of March 2016. At this time, I'll ask representatives of County Government Week Committee to come forward to receive the proclamation. The chairman requests that Commissioner Williams present the proclamation. Commissioner Williams.
Jack, I think I've got a crowd like you do up here this evening. I took the time, I wanted to write a few words and -- because it really spoke to me in the time that I've been a commissioner and the work that I have watched, observed, and witnessed from the employees of Onslow County, tremendous work that you all do and provide to the citizens. And it clearly states, "As a proud Onslow County Commissioner, on behalf of all the board members, it is with utmost respect that I present this proclamation to the outstanding employees that do the daily work of our county. In order for us, as a whole, to obtain acknowledgements from the John Locke Foundation, Standard and Poor's, and many other outside agencies, that acknowledgement and commitment is due to the dedication of our employees. However, under the commissioners, however, when the commissioners stepped in and agreed to take on the commitment of salvaging Bear Creek Fire Station and to hear a citizen walk up to you and say thank you for the decision you all made to save thousands of dollars for us in this community is why we serve as a team to enhance the quality of life for our citizens. We owe the great commitment, the work of the commitment and dedication to the employees of Onslow County for the great work that you do. I know oftentimes your families are sacrificed for the time and an energy that you give to our community. But it's proven in all the outside agencies that come forward and state what a great county and a great work. And we, as commissioners, could never do the work that you do, the time and energy that you put in. So kudos to you all, and we appreciate what you do daily. Thank you."
Who's accepting? Alrighty, there she is.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. On the behalf of our committee, I would like to thank the Board of Commissioners for the proclamation and for the opportunity to show the community a little bit about what we do in county government and also to celebrate our employees. We kicked off County Government Week this morning with our awards breakfast where we recognized over 1,800 years of service for those folks that received awards for their five, 10, 15, 20, and 30-year pins this year. So just to let you know, and as Dr. Doyle said this morning, that's just the folks that received awards this year. That doesn't count all the other folks that are working on your behalf every day. So a big hand and a shout-out to the Onslow County employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you for the work. Thank you for the work. Thank you. Thank you for the work. Thank you. Thank you for the work.
That concludes the proclamations this evening. At this time, we'll move into several special recognitions. The first is North Carolina State Parks' recognition. Onslow County has partnered with the State of North Carolina to significantly expand Hammocks Beach State Park. Using 100% tourism funds, the county has committed $1 million over four years to help acquire property and develop the park. This is yet another example of state-county partnerships. Onslow also partnered with the state in the development of boat landings in Jacksonville, Shell Rock Landing, and Sneets Ferry. This evening, we are privileged to have with us Mr. Michael A. Murphy, the Director of the North Carolina Division of Parks and Recreation, who will make a presentation to Onslow County. The chairman requests that Vice Chairman Buchanan accept the presentation on behalf of county government. Vice Chairman and Director Murphy.
Mike, if you're going to come up, you need to bring David with you.
Well, they're all going to come.
You're going to bring them all up?
So good evening. I am Mike Murphy, Director of State Parks. And with me, I've brought Sarah Kendrick, who is Superintendent of Hammocks Beach State Park, David Pearson, who is President of the Friends of the Hammocks and Bear Island, also Executive Director of the Friends of State Parks, the statewide organization, and Pam Pearson, also from Hammocks Beach State Park. I am here to present a commemorative recognition to the commission and grateful appreciation for Onslow County's commitment to Hammocks Beach State Park. As was said, the county has committed $1 million of tourism funds over the next four years to help acquire property and develop the park. And the first installment of this commitment has been received, has been deposited in the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund and allocated for Hammocks Beach. As a little bit of background, in April 2015, North Carolina State Parks, along with the Conservation Fund, acquired 289 additional acres at Hammocks Beach State Park. These mainland acres actually increased the park's mainland acreage more than tenfold from 30 acres to 319, the bulk of the acreage being Bear Island and the other islands in the park. Over the course of the next year, we're going to be developing a master plan which will look at different opportunities we have with this new acreage. Things being considered are youth camp, family camping, group camping, RV camping, paddle-in camping, picnic shelters, rental event space, and hiking trails. We'll plan to move forward to this master plan in the next few months, awarding the contract, and hopefully get it done by the end of this calendar year. We expect to have substantial public input, including online components as well as public meetings. And so when that master plan is completed, I'll be happy to come back and brief the commission on what the plan said. In addition, I should point out that next week, should the voters pass on it, the Connect NC Bond proposal contains $1.1 million for a boat ramp at the park as part of the $75 million allocated to state parks. Should this occur, the boat ramp, I believe, will be very popular with the public here in the county. I'd also like to mention that 2016 is the centennial year for the North Carolina State Park System. It was about 100 years ago that the General Assembly chose to save Mount Mitchell and buy about 500 acres on that mountain to avoid the mountain being completely timbered over. And so since then, we've added quite a bit to our state park system. As you can imagine, we are the proud stewards of 35 state parks, four state recreation areas, 20 state natural areas, seven lakes, four rivers, and five state trails. These 75 units as a whole comprise about 230,000 acres. And last year, 17.3 million people visited a North Carolina State Park. And so we're very proud of that. That's an 11% increase over the previous year, and both of those years were records. Hammocks Beach State Park, established in 1961, is now over 1,500 acres, includes the four-mile-long Bear Island and enjoyed record visitation as well, about over 195,000 over 2014, which was a 9% increase. And so we're confident that the development of the new property will attract even more visitors to enjoy the marshlands, sea, and surf at this beautiful, beautiful park. And of course, increased visitation will translate into increased economic impact here in the county. During this important year, we will have special centennial events at each state park. The first event was this past weekend in Eno River in Durham, and will continue throughout the year. The centennial event at Hammocks Beach will be Military Appreciation Day on Saturday, June 4, sponsored by the Friends of the Hammocks and Bear Island and the Military Affairs Committee of the Swansboro Area Chamber of Commerce. In addition, the park is holding its annual North Carolina Paddle Fest, May 3 through 7. Our partners for that event include Onslow County, and thank you very much, the Friends of the Hammocks and Bear Island, the Swansboro TDA, the Friends of State Parks, National Volkswagen and Subaru, and the Great Outdoor Provision Company, among others. So I hope you will have an opportunity to attend an event in the state parks. We have some flyers we'll be handing out as well as park passports so that we can get on your calendars during the course of the year. And within the passport, as you go from park to park, you can get them stamped so you can keep track of all the parks you visit. So we hope that the commission will decide to hang this recognition, which says, "In grateful recognition of Onslow County's generous and ongoing commitment and support to Hammocks Beach State Park and the North Carolina State Park System," signed by me. And we hope that you'll hang this in a public space here in this beautiful building. We'll have a duplicate of this hanging in the visitor's center at Hammocks Beach, so we'll be able to see it there as well. Once the new property opens and the master plan is completed, we will also place appropriate signage on the new property that commemorates the commitment of the county to the state park. So we thank you very much. We thank you for your support of Hammocks Beach State Park and state parks in general. And we look forward to a long and mutually satisfying relationship between the county and state parks. And so we thank you very much.
We appreciate that. It's an honor for us to get this, but there's a lot more goes into this whole operation. And if you ever have a chance, a lot of people have never been to Hammocks Beach State Park. I have moved to Swansboro about four years ago and have been helping out, cook hot dogs, of all things. And David can tell you more about that because Scott Chadwick, the mayor down in Swansboro, gave me an award, and I won't tell you what the award was for. But the new superintendent, I know her very well, but I do also know her husband. He's Marine Fisheries Officer, and him and I have been friends for many, many years. That park is a jewel for Onslow County. It is a beautiful place, and if you've never been, you need to go. There's so much going on there all the time, and I get invited to their meetings and so do the other commissioners, but a lot of times, we're really busy and we can't make it all the time. But David is very, very instrumental in what took place down there. And Mr. Murphy's been very instrumental with us. He met with Barbara and I and Jeff to go over a lot of this that we did. But the key to this whole thing is, this is tourism money, occupancy tax. It is not taxpayers' money from the general fund at all, zero. It comes from the tourism, and as a lot of people don't understand, we keep trying to educate people on that. So the million dollars that we've dedicated to this, this is the only one we've done this to. The Museum of the Marine, million dollars. The Vietnam Memorial, which is a beautiful facility, a million dollars. $400,000 of Freedom Fountain, $400,000 of the Jacksonville Land, and that's just the money that we put into it from tourism money. But the other piece of that is that we own the land on the waterfront. So it's worth more than that $400,000 that we donated. And then we have a lot of other things that we do, and Barbara and I, self, and these commissioners that are behind me believe in CIP projects, stuff we can see and touch. And Hammocks Beach State Park is that jewel that the people will really love to have and deal with and go to on many, many visits. And I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. You're good. You're good. Good.
Thank you, guys.
Thank all of y'all. Appreciate everything. It's been a long journey, and we appreciate it.
The International City-City Management Association Excellence Award. ICMA's Local Governance -- government, rather, Excellence Awards recognize the importance and value of local government management while highlighting creative and innovative programs. This year's winners were announced at ICMA's Annual Conference and acknowledged in Public Management Magazine. Onslow County won the Sustainability Award for all populations 50,000 and greater by developing a successful and sustainable waste disposal program.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, it's been wonderful to witness you recognizing your employees tonight. That's very meaningful for all of our public servants, but this is an opportunity for me to address and to recognize you for your leadership. ICMA is an international association, and the award that you're going to receive tonight was only bestowed upon 10 communities nationwide. There was only one other community in North Carolina that received an Excellence Award, and that was Catawba County in a different category. So this is indeed a privilege and an honor to be able to present this tonight. Onslow County has experienced tremendous growth, and with that growth comes trash and the challenges that come along with disposing of that trash. And in so many of our local governments, the solid waste function has always been looked at as a cost, as an expense. And it's one of the things that is budgeted for, and it seems to increase in expense every year. But what you did was look at it from a different perspective, and that's what we're here to commend tonight. So many times, I think in government, we become creatures of habit, and we follow our traditions, and we're not as quick to adjust and to new opportunities. But what you've done with your solid waste program is you've taken an expense to the county and to the taxpayers, and not only made it more environmentally sustainable, but made it economically beneficial to the entire community. From the methane gas to the solar project that you're gonna vote on tonight, and I just learned 10 minutes ago that we're gonna talk about free firewood collection and things of that nature, but all of these are examples that other local governments can follow. And I can assure you that there are already a lot of people trying to figure out how you turned a landfill from an expense to an income. So we wanted to recognize that and tell you we appreciate the example that you have set for North Carolina local governments. You've made us very proud, and also for the rest of the country, and we think that there will be many who follow in your footsteps. So I do have a clock.
Thank you.
This is from the International City County Management Association. Program Excellence Award for Community Sustainability, presented to the County of Onslow, North Carolina, in recognition of County Solid Waste Management Department. I might have to put my glasses on to get longer arms.
I'll hold it over here for you.
And this award was presented in Seattle, and your staff was present to accept it, and you have made North Carolina proud, and we thank you for the example and the leadership that you have provided.
Thank you. I cannot take this without these two people coming and being beside me. Come on, come on. I would love to say that this was all my doings, and I just am the greatest, but really, this guy and this lady, they have been the backbone of the success at our solid waste. And in case you don't know, one of the byproducts of a landfill is methane gas. And when I came in to office a few years back, we were actually burning the gas off to get rid of it. And through the efforts of our employees here behind me, we kept that gas, and we turned it into energy, and we partnered with a company to buy that methane gas and make it a revenue source coming back to the county. That was great and wonderful, but then they said, "Well, why don't we capture some solar and add that to the energy process, and maybe we can make more?" So because of those efforts, we have a revenue stream coming back to the county, as you stated. We took a negative and turned it into a positive. And when I see our employees standing up here, it gives me a feeling of such pride to know that we have so many wonderful people that work for this county that afford us the opportunity to get rewards like this, and it's because of their efforts. They could come to work, put their nine-to-five hours in and go home, and no one would ever criticize them one bit. They've done their day's work. But that's not our employees here at Onslow County. Our employees are dedicated. They're dedicated to the county. They're dedicated to the citizens, and they're dedicated to the Board of Commissioners, and we are indeed grateful. Thank you. Thank you for the award.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you again. Scott, would you like to say something?
Chairman, thank you so much for those kind words, but I want to say a couple things. This is for the citizens of the county, but we couldn't have done this without the support of the commissioners and the trust that y'all gave us. So thank y'all very much.
You're more than welcome. Thank you. I'll cherish this.
The next recognition is one which is not new to Onslow County. The last one was that Sustainability Award for All Populations 50,000 and Greater is very unique and very special. But for this next award, you would want this to be almost routine, and it seems like at least twice a year, we invite Mr. David McCold to come forward for one of these awards, as I will do so in a moment or two. The next presentation award is the Certificate of Achievement in Excellence in Financial Reporting for the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Onslow County's CAFR, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, was submitted to the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, for participation in the Certificate of Achievement in Excellence in Financial Reporting Program. The CAFR has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, including demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure, to clearly communicate its financial story, and motivate potential user groups to read the CAFR. The Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting has been awarded to Onslow County by the Government Finance Association of the United States and Canada for its Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. So basically, this award is proof by an independent third-party agency that Onslow County is in fact functioning and reporting well all of its current finances. At this time, I'll ask Mr. David McCold, our Finance Officer, and any finance staff present, to join me at the microphone. The chairman has requested that I present the award to the Onslow County Finance Department. So this is Mr. David McCold. He's the Chief Financial Officer for Onslow County. David is a CPA, and he keeps all of our finances straight, and this award hangs on the wall of finance, and we add to it every year. And if you ever have a chance to go back into finance office, behind the closed doors, there's a back hallway. And as you walk down this hallway, there's plaque after plaque after plaque after award after certificate after award, each year for excellence in financial reporting and budgeting. And we're very proud of the heritage in financial reporting that you and your staff continue to give the citizens of Onslow County. If there's one thing that citizens expect, demand, require, and should be proud of, it's that government reports its finances accurately and honestly. And this independent verification of that is very important. We expect no less. I look forward to the one that you're gonna get for us next year. No pressure, but yes. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
I'd just like to thank the board for recognizing finance for getting this award, and also just say that this is indicative of the great staff that we have in finance. They all individually come with certain abilities and talents, and are able to bring those talents to the table every day, day in, day out, and come together as a team, which is what gives us this opportunity to win this award. And I just am truly blessed to have the group that I have in finance, and I'm thankful for that every day. Thanks.
Madam Chair, shall I continue with item five? Item five, general items, Innovative Landfill Solar Panel Project. At this time, I'll ask Mr. Scott Bost, our Solid Waste Director, who is just recently up front, to come forward and present this item to the Board of Commissioners. Mr. Bost.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Manager. In 2012, Onslow County Landfill began a solid waste renewable energy project. I worked with Interdine Power to build a landfill gas energy system at no cost to the county. That project has been very successful to date. So far, we realize a revenue stream of more than $65,000 per year. We want to enter into the second phase of renewable energy project at the landfill. The solar panel project we're talking about is the first of its kind in North Carolina. We're utilizing an old, closed landfill for 14.62 acres of a solar panel facility. We had to work with the state to actually write the rules for this, and since it's the first kind. And the state actually said to us, "We look forward to the completion of this project and stand by, ready to assist in any manner." So we had their full blessing, and they're actually enthusiastic as we are. So at this point, the county, along with Onslow Power Producers, desire to enter to a lease for 25 years to collect sunshine and make power.
What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion?
I just got a comment. I want to thank you, and the chairman mentioned earlier about our solar panels. We have a lot of endeavors out there with the recycling program, which saves the customers when they go to the container sites to recycle without any cost to them. And if they're like me, three-fourths of their disposal is recyclable, and we only have like a small portion that has to actually go in there. So that endeavor has made the landfill a freestanding funded unit. It's totally funded by the endeavors of the landfill, and I appreciate that again from, also with the chairman and her remarks earlier. I shout out that, and I appreciate what we're doing to set the example and be example for the state and other future programs like this.
Thank you very much.
Any further comments? Hearing no further comments, what, can I have a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Passes unanimously.
Mr. Bost, if you'll just stay right there. The next item is the Free Firewood Program. Sir, if you would please explain that to the public this evening and present the item to the commissioners.
The Free Firewood Program is very simple. One of the waste streams we manage at the landfill is LCID, land clearing and inert debris. Part of this waste stream is logs or other type of wood that could be used for other purposes. Well, rather than just burying it, taking up space that we will need to, you know, manage later on down the road, why not offer it back to the citizens? So we're proposing a program where we sequester the firewood, the logs we take off to a side area somewhere where it's safe, and offer this to the citizens to come cut at their leisure for free, for no charge.
What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Any discussion? I'll just ask, Scott, we are cautious about the liability of having people come and chainsaw up this firewood, and they do it at their own risk?
Absolutely. We worked really hard with the Attorney's Office to come up with a waiver form that they have to sign. We have to know they're on-site working, so they will not be allowed there after hours. It'll be very closely controlled.
Okay. If there's nothing further, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you.
The next item is Records Retention Schedule for the Onslow County Sheriff's Office. According to Journal Statute 121-5B and Journal Statute 132-3, you may only destroy public records with the consent of the Department of Natural and Cultural Resources. The State Archives of North Carolina is a division of DNCR, charged with administering a records management program. This schedule is a primary way the State Archives of North Carolina gives this consent. The State Archives of North Carolina has changed the records retention schedule for the sheriff's office. The Onslow County Sheriff's Office needs to adopt current North Carolina records retention schedule released by State Archives of North Carolina. Colonel Donnie Worrell is available to answer any questions the board may have. The specific action requested is to respectfully approve the Onslow County Sheriff's Office retention schedule released by the State Archives of North Carolina and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the county.
Motion. Second.
Any questions for Mr. Worrell?
Let's let him walk up here anyway, so we can look at him.
Madam Chair, fellow commissioners, glad you're doing well tonight. We've been maintaining our records now. I could probably go back, I could show Mr. Buchanan and Mr. Jarman, I probably got records up there in our upstairs second floor that they did. They started years ago. We've got most of our misdemeanors and felony, or case files, I know they go back to at least 1970. Of course, in 2004, we switched to a new records maintenance system. Everything's basically digital now. We still do, on our case files, we have paper copies of those. We have to keep those forever and a day, basically 20 years plus after they're solved. And if they go unsolved, we have to keep them forever until something comes about with them. But that's about it. As far as our civil process, you know, we have to keep certain copies of civil process. You know Major Zimmerman? Two things that'll get us sued the quickest are the jail and civil process, and Major Zimmerman is meticulous record keeper.
And we appreciate that. We really do. Thank you, Donnie.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. I have a motion, and at this time, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Item D, Airport Air Traffic Control Tower Project. At this time, I'll ask Mr. Chris White, the Airport Director, to come forward, present this item, which includes some good news on a grant. Mr. White?
Yes. Good evening, commissioners. Onslow County is home to the third busiest airport in the United States in terms of passengers without an air traffic control tower. Last year, Albert JLS Airport served over half a million passengers and citizens. As the county continues to develop its world-class facility, Onslow County has been awarded a grant from the state of North Carolina in the amount of $2 million to help build a new air traffic control tower. An additional $2 million in federal grant dollars are anticipated to be received later this year. This will pay for most of the cost to build the control tower. In addition, the federal government has accepted Onslow County into the Contract Tower Program, which has historically paid staffing costs for towers this size. Senator Harry Brown, Representative Phil Shepherd, and NCDOT Board Member Sandra Fountain were instrumental in obtaining this grant through the recently approved state budget. Onslow County Commissioners, the Board of Onslow County Commissioners, has requested to approve the budget amendment, adding $2 million in state funding to the air traffic control tower project. Construction of the tower is estimated to begin before the end of this calendar year and will be completed in 2018. The specific action requested is, the airport respectfully requests that the Board of Commissioners accept the grant, approve the amended project ordinance, and any associated budget amendments.
Motion.
Second. I'll second. Any discussion? I have a couple questions for you, Chris.
Absolutely.
I know the $4 million sounds like a lot of money, but do we have an estimate on how much the tower will actually cost and any additional amounts? Is that coming out of your enterprise money at the airport?
It's anticipated the total project cost, all the way from planning through construction, will run about $5 million or a little bit less. The $1 million difference between the The $1 million difference between the $2 million in federal funds and $2 million in state funds will be paid through passenger facility charges and other revenues from the airport. There will be no local tax dollars involved with this project.
Okay. Now, I know that we've sort of hit that passenger facility fund pretty much on some of these other projects. You've analyzed your data, and there's enough revenue left in that fund?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
You're talking, historically, they paid staff. A year ago, they cut Wilmington out. Did they restore them? About a year ago, they cut the staff and paying the staff in Wilmington out, and they closed the tire down for a while, Wilmington. And I was just going to ask you, have they started back paying those staffers yet?
Yes, there are currently 253 contract towers in the program, and those are fully funded towers. There are a few cost share programs where the local funds cover 20% of the operating cost of the tower. Those are in a few limited communities that are much smaller than Onslow County than Albert J. Ellis Airport. And the airlines will also pick up that cost if, for some reason, we went into the cost share program. This program enjoys broad bipartisan support from both chambers of Congress, so we anticipate the program is going to continue, as it has since 1983, when it was established, for many years into the future. So we're not at risk of, I do not believe we're at risk of having to pick up the cost of operating the control tower.
Chris, will this afford our airport more flights? Will it affect the size of flights? Will it do anything more than ensure the safety of the existing flights?
Well, number one, it enhances safety at the airport, as you get a mixture of high-performance, larger passenger aircraft at the airport, mixed with slower-moving, propeller-driven, and rotorcraft aircraft at the airport. It will enhance safety, but it'll also have an economic development component to it as well. The airlines, through insurance regulations, are restricted on the size of the aircraft they can operate at untowered airports. So this will remove that barrier, so it'll allow the airlines to operate larger aircraft. Also, a lot of corporate flight departments will not operate, will not base aircraft, and will not operate aircraft at uncontrolled airports. So this opens up a whole new world to operators at the airport, in addition to enhancing safety, which is its primary mission.
Okay. Is there anything further?
I know you're talking about all the economic development. One of the key things is we could get more cargo aircraft coming in, too.
Well, that is one of our goals as we develop our economic development strategy at the airport, is to get more cargo. Today, UPS operates at the airport on a daily basis, and we hope to expand that to additional cargo carriers in the future.
Thank you, Chris.
Madam Chair, I do have one quick question. And that is, I see that the calendar year for completion is slated for 2018. Once it's built, as far as maintenance, upkeep, how and where does that responsibility fall?
It'll be a county facility, county-owned facility, so we will maintain it. We will keep the lights on, and we will wash the windows, so to speak. So we will maintain it. Now, we built into our rates and charges, so essentially, the revenue that the airport generates to operate today will cover those costs to maintain that facility into the future.
Very good. Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Item six is appointments. The first appointment is for the Fire Rescue Commission. The Onslow County Fire Rescue Commission was created by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners to oversee the volunteer fire departments and rescue squads in the county. The following terms will expire on March 7, 2016. Seat six, volunteer rescue squad representative; seat three, volunteer fire department representative; seat seven, at-large category with no affiliation with any fire rescue agency; seat eight, licensed insurance agent with no affiliation with a fire rescue agency. The Onslow County Association of Rescue Squads met in January and nominated the following individuals to be considered for seat number six, Mr. David Marshall or Mr. Matthew Haislip. The Onslow County Fire Chiefs Association met on January 14, 2016, and nominated the following individuals to be considered for seat number three, Mr. Jeremy Foster or Mr. Timothy Van Pelt. Additionally, staff received applications from Mr. Curtis B. Hilt, Jr., and Mr. William Kelly for seat seven, at-large, with no affiliation with the fire rescue agency; Mr. Lee Hoffman, seat eight, licensed insurance agent with no affiliation with the fire rescue agency. Ballots have been prepared for the Board's convenience. However, not all seats this evening require ballots. The first, excuse me, the Fire Rescue Commission. Pardon?
I shoot.
Excuse me. Always come in twos. All right. Starting again, the specific action requested. The Fire Rescue Commission respectfully requests that the Board of Commissioners consider appointment of one individual in seats three, six, and seven in their respective categories for a two-year term that will expire on March 7, 2018. Secondly, that the Commissioners appoint Mr. Lee Hoffman for seat eight, licensed insurance agent with no affiliation with the fire rescue agency. So the ballots this evening, there are three separate ballots. The first will be for seats three, six, and seven. At this time, I will collect, I would like to collect, Commissioners.
Let's collect all the ballots at one time.
All the ballots.
Commissioners, place all of your ballots out.
Commissioners, for seat number three, the Commissioners have chosen Mr. Jeremy Foster. For seat number six, the Commissioners have chosen Mr. Matthew Haislip. And for seat number seven, the Commissioners have chosen Mr. Curtis B. Hilt, Jr. And for the benefit of the public, the Commissioners are afforded ballots for their convenience. According with state law, Commissioners are allowed to use ballots. All ballots must be signed, and all ballots must be available for public inspection immediately following the meeting in the office of the clerk, Ms. Julie Wond, clerk to the Board. Commissioners, that concludes your appointments for seats three, six, and seven, and that is the action the Board has taken for those three seats. The remaining action left to be taken is the possible appointment of Mr. Lee Hoffman to seat number eight, licensed insurance agent with no affiliation with the fire rescue agency, for a two-year term that will expire on March 7, 2018.
Motion to approve. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Commissioners, that concludes the appointments for item six. Thank you.
Okay. We have nothing that was pulled from the consent agenda. Do we have a second public comment for five minutes? Anyone signed up? Mr. Manager?
Madam Chair, we do. This is the second public comment period. During this second public comment period, there is a five-minute time limit. In accordance with the Board's Rules of Procedure, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner comment period at the end of the agenda. Citizens shall have the opportunity to talk upon, about any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners have control. At this time, I would invite Ms. Teresa Moore of 328 West Golden Island, Sneed's Ferry, to come forward. Ms. Moore?
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Teresa Moore, and I am from Sneed's Ferry. And I have a program called Kids Inspiring Community that my, at the time, 10, she's now 13-year-old daughter, started. It is a nonprofit. We have an EIN number. What we do is we take, we have 15 kids in our program, and we go out and take the kids to nursing homes, nursing facilities here in Jacksonville. We go to the USO and volunteer. So we take the kids out to volunteer, to teach them, to give back to community while they're young. And one of the things that we have been doing in Sneed's Ferry for the last couple of years besides that is we have been raising money to build a recreation and life center. It started out as a youth center. However, really quickly going back, I'm a Marine Corps wife 20 years. My husband retired from the Marine Corps. We retired here, and we lived here about nine years now. So as we had proceeded with trying to build the youth center, we found out, while we were out talking to the public, that there were a lot of senior citizens in the area also that needed, you know, a place to go, whether it was for recreation or to exercise, things like that. And so we, in the last couple of years, have put on events to raise money to build this center. And what I come with you tonight is that we are in the process of doing a, sorry, feasibility report for the center. We have looked at a couple of properties in Sneed's Ferry. We've raised $5,000 so far, and we've also put on events for children where we've paid for it in the Sneed's Ferry area, just for them to be able to come and have something to do. If you know the Sneed's Ferry area, you know there's nothing really. We have one park. However, once it's dark, which, you know, during the winter, it gets dark very quickly, there's nothing really for them to do out there. And so in trying to keep them out of trouble, along with working with the schools, there's a lot of programs that we really want to do there. Senior aerobics being one, water aerobics. We were going to have a swimming pool. We'll work closely with the schools. I already am in touch with them. To do track and field, we'll be able to be done there. It cannot be done right now. We'll be including swim teams that we don't have at our Dixon schools right now, fencing classes. So a lot of things at the school we'll be able to utilize in our center. And then also, we'll be adding a zip line park and some laser tag. We already have a company in Wilmington who's willing to come down and rent space to have the laser tag park. So that would bring tourism. So if the people who come to the beach, it gives us something to, you know, the kids something to do in Sneed's Ferry. Also Jacksonville, we'll be able to come, and Wilmington, because there's nothing like that in either location also. And then the tourists who come to the beach, once, again, you can't get in the beach at the dark, it gives them a location to come, a center for them to come with their children and spend time also. So while they're on vacation, they can play basketball with their children, and then go to the zip line park. That's where our sustainability would come from. We also have rental spaces in there. We already have three businesses willing to be in there also. One of the things with the programs I really want to quickly tell you about is I have contacted, like, the Department of Human Services, and we would love the county to come in and to do programs to bring them to Sneed's Ferry. So instead of the county having to build a whole nether building eventually in Sneed's Ferry, we would have this location with the meet, and you will see, when I bring the feasibility report to you, you will see the meeting rooms where the county could actually utilize for, you know, the class, anything that you need would be able to be utilized there. I know we have put in, you guys have put in the small senior citizen in the old library program that's out there. But some of the programs that we will do, that we'll work with, will be teen suicide, self-esteem. We would love to do free tutoring, because right now, the schools, you know, they have a hard time, we're overcrowded, so that the teachers have a hard time, and not everyone can afford Sylvan or any other kind of tutoring classes. And for us, one of the things that we do is we always make sure anything that we do is affordable, no matter what anyone's income is. And it's very important to us. And so we would do the same thing with the memberships. But we were wondering respectfully if we could somehow, once we have that feasibility report, come back to you and possibly have the county support with some funding to be able to, you know, help us along with this. We will raise our money also. We will continue to do this. Again, we've been working on it for a couple of years, but we will continue to do so once the feasibility report is done with grants and things like that. But, you know, with the tourism, we felt that, because we will have a lot of tourists that will utilize those event spaces.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Yep.
Madam Chair, that's the only individual that has signed up for the second public comment period.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Manager, would you like to have some comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just two thank yous this evening during manager's comments, maybe three. I would like to thank, once again, Director Michael Murphy from North Carolina State Parks, coming. We really appreciate you coming from Raleigh and taking the drive out here, and we look forward to partnering with you in Hammock's Beach State Park. I would also like to specifically thank Mr. Scott Bost and Ms. Lisa Ryder, our Director of Solid Waste and Deputy Director of Solid Waste. They've brought a great recognition to Onslow County. And actually, on the way in, I was mentioning, I believe to Mr. Murphy, how one of the most important decisions that you can do as a manager is who you hire. I mean, it's almost the most important decision that you make. And we have, over the last seven years, had many, many hires for department head positions as people moved to different places or retired. And one of those hires I'm very proud of is Mr. Bost. And he came to us with a lot of great ideas and has taken the program and really made it his own. And we have many other, many other great department heads. And during this County Government Week, we certainly want to highlight the contributions of our county employees, and it's an honor serving with men and women like Mr. Bost and Ms. Ryder. So thank you all very much. And Commissioners, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner comments. Ms. Williams?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And I would just echo what Jeff has stated. The employees of this community are phenomenal people, phenomenal citizens, and great employees. And of the 1,250 that we have, I would just like to say thank you once again, and can't say it enough, for who you are and what you provide to the county. And again, as I stated earlier, for the awards that we receive, the outside agencies that recognize the work that's done in this county is amazing. And to receive international awards, I mean, that is, that's huge in my vote here as a Commissioner, to know that at an international level, Onslow County is on the map, and that means a lot to us as Commissioners for the work that you do. Again, thank you, and good night to everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Jarman?
I echo the same thing Ms. Williams and Mr. Hudson have said. We have great employees throughout this county. I'm proud of them. They make us look pretty good when you get up here tonight, like they have, especially if you were in the process of heaven hiring, you know? So we really appreciate all of them. And, you know, once in a while, the Commissioners have the chance to kindly award to employees. And I would like to say tonight, I've not given them any days off, or our human resources doing their programs of trying to get our wages kindly adjusted and stuff. I don't regret any of that. I know some people says, you know, we're throwing away money, they're getting overpaid. I don't think so. You know, I'll say this. I don't think it's right, you got an entity that's right across the road, and I'm just saying, a type is one here and a type is one there. Look at the difference in the money to get. Now, which one is most important? I think one is just as important as the other. So it's not right for this county to have people working on the base out there drawing big bucks. I mean, big, big bucks, and people in the county working and not drawing half as much as they're drawing. It is not right, and working harder than they're working out there. So I am proud to support the employees of this county. I've got nothing to regret for what I have done, little I have helped do for. I've got nothing to regret for what I have done, little I have helped do for them, and I don't believe the rest of you that helped regret it either. So I'll just say with that, good night, and I reckon I better hook.
Preach, oh brother. Mr. Brock?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, David, for what you do at the Hammocks Beach State Park, and Mr. Murphy for coming and doing the presentation to us tonight concerning the award and the contributions that the county's made. I do remember Ms. Harriet Hurst, if y'all, when you get in the planning stages and the development stages, she hadn't made some type of request about having a, I think you even mentioned that, about a youth center, and down at the old 4H camp. I spent a lot of time down at the old 4H camp, but not 4H, and I was down there for other reasons, but in my teenage days. But anyway, that is one of the things that, descended from the John Hurst family that actually owned all that land at one time, and it ended up being part of the Hammocks Beach State Park, and what an area that is, and what a crown, as I believe Paul said, what a crown jewel Onslow County has, to have something like that in the land that's never been developed and can stay, basically undeveloped just for recreation. I do applaud you for your hard work, David, and all the people, the friends out of Hammocks and the state of North Carolina for partnering with us, and I hope you'll keep Ms. Harriet's ideas in your planning and your development of that park, and I know she would be very honored to see that happen. On a sad note, I would like to say my condolences goes out to the, our First Lady, years back, Ms. Nancy Reagan and her husband. He was one of the greatest Presidents we ever had, in my book, and she was one of the best First Ladies in my book. Her passing and her contribution to the country, and her husband's contribution to the country just cannot be underestimated. It's a tremendous loss that we had, and she'll be missed, and President Reagan has always been missed, and he's an idol to a lot of people that's in politics now. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Vice Chair Buchanan?
I'll try to keep it short. I mean, it's busy tonight. Everybody said quite a bit, our employees today, their service award was just amazing to see all those awards given out. The other thing, Mike, thank you for coming, and David, and Superintendent, it's a great place down there, and you know how much I support it. I enjoy cooking hot dogs for the Marines, rather than all the military. Ms. Moore, what you need to do is, you sound like you have a lot of passion, and I could tell that, and Ms. Eichner is from Sneed's Ferry, and I can tell you, when it comes to the children, this Board of Commissioners really supports them. We do everything we can for our children in this community. You might need to get up with David McCall, I think you seen him get an award tonight. He's our finance person, he can tell you what the grants are and how to go about the grants. I know you need a feasibility study, but he might be able to tell you the rest of the process. With that, I'll say good night.
Thank you, Mr. Buchanan. I actually was going to applaud Ms. Moore, too. It's our citizens like you, Ms. Moore, that take the initiative to provide some of these programs. County government cannot provide everything that our citizens might need, but certainly with the help of volunteers like yourself, we can assist you and maybe guide you and help your dream come true, and all the citizens in Onslow County will benefit from your efforts. So as Vice Chair said, do get up with David and see if he can help you. Also, too, I would like to thank the Board of Commissioners and staff. This past week, we opened a new senior center in Sneed's Ferry. We moved the seniors into an existing building that the county owned in order to not pay any rent, and it's much cleaner, brighter, and more cheery, in a better location, and I just know the seniors in Sneed's Ferry appreciate the efforts of the board. So on their behalf, I would like to thank you. And lastly, I would like to say, Onslow County has come so far, so far, over the past seven years, and it is indeed our employees that have brought us this far. The initiative, the forward-thinking, the programs that they have brought forth, there's just no way that we could ever, ever thank them enough. Yes, we pay them a salary, and we try to show our appreciation with additional days off, but you make Onslow County a trendsetter in the state, and to actually be recognized globally for our efforts. Who'd have thunk? Poor little Onslow County down here, a trendsetter in the nation, let alone the world. So I thank the employees for that, and I hope that we can continue. I don't know how you raise the bar any higher, you've already done so much, but if there's nothing further.
Salute.
Second to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? We're adjourned.